All right, I'll call the order of regular meeting of Chisholm City Council for October 26, 2022. Good evening, everyone. Susan, could you take roll call, please?
Counselor Allen.
Present.
Counselor Mathella Rahah.
Present.
Counselor Fong.
Here.
Counselor Lance.
Here.
Counselor Buck.
Here.
Mayor Chan.
Here. Adopt the agenda. Shockingly, counsel, we have no additions. However, if you turn to page two in the blue sheets, Eileen is going to actually go over the second and third quarter 2022 reports. So just a little typo there. And then under Stephanie, that airport resolution just says 1022 whatever. It's actually -95. The resolution in your packet actually reflects that. So motion to adopt the agenda with the two little corrections.
Make the motion.
Thank you, Adam. Second.
Support.
Thank you, Cheyenne. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, public participation. Tonight, we have Andy Nerico signed up. Good evening, Mr. Nerico. Come on up.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. I appreciate it. I'm at this place. I prepared myself so I could make it quick, otherwise those of you known at the moment know it wouldn't be quick. So I've got to prepare. Anyway, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you very much for your time and your considerations, hopefully, this evening. I have three issues I'd like to talk about real quick, and they all stem around the recent construction and ongoing issues at Heritage Manor. First off, recently following construction, Heritage Manor began their food and beverage providing deliveries on the north side of the building, rather than on the south side where they always deliver, forever. It seems that there's a new kitchen area expansion that includes a door, a sidewalk, and a little curb that make it very convenient for deliveries. I spoke with planning and zoning, expressing these concerns regarding the noise from these deliveries, diesels, at least two of them running from the refrigeration to the engine, diesel fuel pollution, traffic congestion, because I have many pictures and videos, if anybody would like to see them, I could share them. They park in the middle of the street, wherever's convenient for them. They block traffic. I watched an ambulance one morning barely get through, and so on and so forth. So anyway, and I also reminded them that this is a residential neighborhood, okay, not a commercial loading zone. So I was told initially by planning and zoning that it was temporary. So I canceled. I was signed up for a September meeting, and I canceled because I was told it was temporary. Well, it's not temporary. It continues. And I was told, you know, the deliveries continue, just the food and beverage deliveries. All other deliveries, trash pickup and everything is still on the south side, like it always has been on that side, not on the residential side. And just yesterday, two no parking signs were erected to keep the area open for the 18-wheelers. And then item number three, we'll talk about the 18-wheelers, because I want to talk about the condition of Sixth Street and what is going to happen with that. Secondly, I'd like to talk about the new generator that's on Sixth Street. This generator is so loud, the noise, the diesel fuel pollution that comes out of it is staggering. And one thing I don't understand, it runs regularly, several times a week, sometimes for two and three hours. I was under the assumption that it's an emergency generator, and I know during those times I have power, and so does everybody else. I know they need to be tested, but this thing seems to be running all the time. So I was told there was a variance given to them to move from where they work next to the building to this new one by planning and zoning. I'd like to know what the variance was for. That's a definite issue. And the third issue is Sixth Street itself. After the last four or five years of construction, combined with Third Street and Heritage Manor, that street used to be a pretty good street. Now, I have friends, people tell me they won't even come that way. They don't drive that way anymore. I know that for a fact. I unfortunately have to watch the ambulances and occasional hurries as they go by. God forbid it's not one of your relatives, one of mine, or somebody else, but it's embarrassing. Okay, so that street, myself and the rest of residents, they would like to know what's in store for it, and they'd like to know how it's going to be paid for when it does get repaired. There's been a lot of commercial traffic on it for years, making a lot of profit, and they've done what they've done to that street. Every one of those trucks has only been loaded for years, way over that. So those are the issues I have. You know, our neighborhood is turning into a noisy commercial loading zone. I'm sure none of you would like to have this happening in front of your house, and all I'm asking is that we get our quiet residential neighborhood back. And that's all I have to say tonight. So thanks for your consideration and time. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Andy, I wrote down all your concerns. We'll look into each one of them.
Yeah, I don't have any time. I don't expect any answers. Now, if I'm going to run, I know you're busy, and I have some sales I have to go. I have a lot of stuff to take care of. But I appreciate your time, and I'm looking forward to any kind of things you can work out, okay? I know they have a business to run. I was in that kind of business. It's probably more convenient for those food and beverage delivery guys. I talked to them personally a couple of times. It is easier, but they can always get right through the building the way they did for decades. So I appreciate your help.
Andy, did you write your address down on that sheet there, just so we have it for the record?
Yeah. The email address and my phone number.
Okay, just so we have it for the record.
And you want the local address? You have it.
Yeah, that would be good, just so we can put it in the record.
You have it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks a lot.
Yeah, have a good evening. All right, we'll move on to reports. Counselor Lance, report tonight.
I have no report tonight.
Okay.
Thank you.
Counselor Nicola Rahah, report tonight.
Good evening. No report.
April's got a big one over there. She's going, "Man, I'm just going to kill this." Counselor Vaki, report.
So I'm just going to note a couple of things. Hopefully, we're done with this meeting fairly quickly, so I can get to my home playoff volleyball game. That's tonight. Volleyball home playoff games tonight. Saturday, boys' football playoff game is in Deer River. Tomorrow, Cross Country is running their section tournament. That's really about all I got.
Who's tricks won yesterday, right?
Yeah, they won, and they play Deer River tomorrow, or I mean, on Saturday, not tomorrow.
That's awesome.
2:00. Fan bus is going, if you want to be on the fan bus.
Really?
We are providing a fan bus.
Travis, you probably know this answer probably more than anybody here. When is the trick-or-treating, that this Main Street trick-or-treating and the dog parade and stuff? Because that's like Monday or something?
Friday.
Friday.
The 28th, this Friday.
All right.
Yeah, and the trunk-or-treat is Sunday.
Okay.
That's Kids Plus. And actual Halloween is Monday. So we have three big opportunities to dress up. And City Hall looks fantastic, by the way. I love the decorations.
I got a feeling I'll see pictures of you dressed as something here coming up.
Never know.
Counselor Fong, report tonight.
No formal report, Mr. Fong.
Wow.
Counselor Alveson, report.
Well, I don't know what all you've been doing, but I've had to go to a lot of meetings. I've attended the Balkan meeting here this week about the fire department. We had our special council meeting. The MCA event held Redhead a couple of weekends ago. I was out there. And I also attended the Highway 169 Open House meeting over at Discovery Center. And last night was at a IRAK meeting.
Thank you.
Can I just add a comment?
Yeah, go ahead.
That cycling event was phenomenal, and it had horrible, horrible weather. And I stood out there and froze with Marty parking cars.
Yes, thanks for all your help and part of your volunteer.
But let me tell you, that was a phenomenal event, from camping to restaurants downtown. I heard absolutely nothing but good things. In fact, there were more Facebook posts that I saw. People were so pumped that they got to ride and were full of iron ore, which, you know, never comes off. From seniors to parents, I mean, it was a great, great event. At one point, Jim's had an hour 45-minute wait because of people coming in. I mean, it was a phenomenal event for this community. And so, you know, kudos to all the people that put that on, because it really was phenomenal.
Thanks to all the volunteers for helping.
Yep, Bridget.
Stephanie?
I just have to laugh, because I seen a few, obviously, see a bunch of posts on Facebook, but the one about, you know, "Boy, gonna have to get home and get these clothes cleaned." I don't think they understand. "Might need a new bike," if you think you're going to get it cleaned. That ore is its own animal there. So.
I can stick with you.
All right, I'll try not to steal anybody's parade here. November 8 election's coming up. Wish all the candidates best of luck. Get out and vote, everybody. That's your civic duty. School referendum's on there. I can just tell you, I completely support it. I don't think there's another answer, but we'll let everybody make that decision. PUC, budget. We're just starting to talk about the budget. We got to get it to the council. We're seeing some big increases coming out of sanitary sewer district, basically having to do with chemicals, electricity, gas, things like that. I dropped the ball. I missed an email. I didn't realize we had it a week ago. So we actually scheduled a special meeting at the PUC for next week, so we can discuss the budget, so we have it. So we got, you know, both of our meetings in November for the council to go over it. So HRA, back when COVID was more prevalent than it is now, we actually had quit public participation at the HRA, and we kind of just, we actually had a motion to stop it. And I put it back on the agenda at the last meeting to reinstate it, officially reinstate it. And we actually held off on reinstating it because we feel we need a policy. We have no policy. And I actually, before the meeting, I grabbed our policy. I didn't even know, I don't even know if everybody knows we have one. There's a policy up there. But I actually grabbed our policy, because we want to put a policy in place. And then, so in the November meeting, November meeting, we're going to implement a policy and then reinstate it. So our project up here with the HRA does Maple View, moving along quite well. The weather's been good. So there, I mean, we're excited that they can get as far as they can, because some of the window replacements and stuff get difficult when it gets cold. So the big thing you've heard about, I'm sure, it's in your packet, but for anybody sitting out here that hasn't heard, there's the rally in support of Hibbing Tack on Saturday. You know, as you're hearing that, you know, Hibbing Tack in two years will be out iron ore to mine. And I asked a few more questions, because, you know, I was thinking, okay, so we're rallying to support Hibbing Tack. There's got to be more to it than that, you know? And there is more to it. The more to it is there are some deposits of ore that are out there. We just have to encourage people to work with Hibbing Tack and get them done. So the SR Steel is on the top of our list, and if you've been following that, you know that thing's nothing but a court nightmare and on and off again. But they really need that ore, and obviously, we need those jobs in this town and Hibbing. And you don't even think about it, but you know, with them mining, you got production taxes that are getting paid in that go to Iron Range Resources and get back to us. I can't even imagine what it'd be like losing a mine with that production tax and what, you know, Iron Range Resources gets. You know, it goes in, you know, it pays for schools around the state, and obviously, the money all these people pay in our area for groceries and things like that, and just living expenses. So along with the good jobs, there's many jobs out there. So I hope they figure something out. So I will be at the Saturday rally, and we're going to meet down at the Union Hall and walk up the street and have a little speech, talk about what's going on and everything up at the Armory. So I think the time was 10:00, if I recall. So that's all I got. Anything anybody thought of while we were talking there? All right, let's move on. Ambulance Director Jess, report tonight. Almost jumped all the way through all the reports. Everybody would have said, "Oh, that's nice." Good evening.
Good evening, everybody. Just real quick, our cardiac monitor that we ordered last December actually got here last night or night before. So yay, 10 months later. But that's exciting news. And then the drawings for the new ambulance just got submitted to me, so I need to review those before we can take our next steps in that process. But otherwise, I think it was satisfactory, unless anyone has any questions from them.
Counselor, anything for Jess?
Thank you.
Thank you. Police Chief, report tonight. I was looking to make sure there was nobody from the fire department here before I moved along. Well, I can't miss you.
Just an informational piece. It was a couple weeks ago, we found out that the number one cause of deaths in St. Louis County this year is overdoses. And although Chisholm's a great little town, and we're not without our issues as well. And again, this week, we had ROD. And I want to give kudos to my officers, first on the scene, and did their job as well as working. And I have to give kudos to the ambulance crew, to everybody who's on there, because they've had a lot of saves this year, and they got them back. They work, both police and EMS work tirelessly and work very well together, and have saved a lot of lives. For every death that we've had in St. Louis County to an overdose, we've had at least a dozen saves. And this is an individual, and this one alone was many doses in our can to keep this individual alive. So they are out there. They are getting worse. We do have them in our town. And kudos to Ed's in the audience tonight for a different reason, but he was one of the officers on scene and worked to keep that guy going and revived by the ambulance. And just want to give a shout out to the officers that responded to those and the ambulance crews for keeping those people alive. And hopefully, we get some help in those areas eventually. You know, we need those resources, but we're not, we're not, everybody, every society, every town has it. So we have it as well. They're doing a good job saving a lot of lives this year. So just wanted to throw that out to both the officers and ambulance.
Vern, I got a question. It may have happened already. I keep forgetting to ask you. I keep seeing a post about "Give it back" or something.
This Saturday.
Okay.
This Saturday. So at the PDN, we've had it for years. We have the prescription dropbox. And anytime you have old prescriptions, or you're cleaning on a loved one's home, you don't know what to do with those, that's where you bring them. You don't want them dropping down the toilet, or crushed down the sink, or even in the garbage. They want them brought to these dropboxes where they're properly disposed of. Those all get picked up and are brought to one facility and properly disposed of. They encourage you to take your names off the labels and stuff, but if you bring it in, that stuff never goes out into the public. They are, it's separated, and it's all disposable. So even if your names are on the bottles, that will not get out to the public. It goes to, it's very well contained. It's all done by law enforcement, picked up by law enforcement, delivered by law enforcement, and then destroyed. So yes, save the water, save the environment, and bring it in. And Saturday is the national, the states, day to drop it off. And we posted on our website that even if you can't make it Saturday, we always have that, and we can take them at any time.
Good.
Reminding you of that. I forgot about it.
Yeah, and it looks like you, the both sheriff's departments are going.
Yeah, almost every town has it, yeah.
Okay, good.
Yeah, I'd just like to add that enough can't be said about what your officers do for the community, you know, being first on scene, helping the EMS, helping fire, you know, it's just, they're there to help right away, hands-on, 24/7. You're already on the streets, you know, so helping us get to a scene, get to a house, you know, anything that you guys do is just astronomical, and it helps out a lot. So thank you very much.
In all the years that I've worked law enforcement, it seems like the departments always work single as together when there's a call. So thank you.
Thank you, Vern. All right, Andy's up tonight. City Engineer, report tonight, Jim.
I have no report, unless you have questions for me, other than what I have on the agenda.
Counselor, anything for Jim? Public Works Larry, report tonight. Good evening.
Evening, Mayor. Thank you. Short report, everybody. You seen the cones and the signs outside. We're working the MinDOT to get the 73 corridor all patched up and sealed up for the winter coming. You see those waves from the salt and stuff. The salt does a lot of damage, so careful out there on that. We're doing the City Hall site tomorrow and the drive-in site across from the post office, and then we'll switch all the signs and get everyone off the street for Friday morning. Senior Center will be closed, less traffic. And we'll get that side of the street done, and we'll go all around and make sure we get all tightened up. So and we'll try to get our lane street all tightened up too, especially all the kids and people walking around. So with all the events this weekend. So and then Knights Lake wasn't down today. They finished our concrete from button-up water sewer digs, our cat basins and curbs and stuff that are missing, and getting all that tightened up for winter as well. And the traffic light on First Avenue by the Valentines and 30 West and such, besides, seems to be praised by the first responders up there, but police also helped us. That was damaged by a vehicle, and it was over $25,000 to repair. Otherwise, it would have been on the taxpayer or our insurance company. But help of the police and everything, we were able to find the people that did it, and we'll charge their insurance company. So so we'll get that. That's why the site did so. It was a hit, and about $25,000 damage to repair. So and we're all block out for the weekend, and looking forward to all the kids and everyone having a good time. And street sweepers out every day, so picking up the leaves and cleaning those cat basins. So.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So I have a question for you.
Please.
Have you gotten feedback on the flashing light? Because I prefer it. So I'm just curious if anyone else has voiced that. Because I didn't, I had no clue that someone hit it or whatever. I thought we just did it. Because I've heard other people say to me, "Why is that not a flashing light? It's not a busy intersection." So I was just curious. Well, now you have my feedback.
And every time I pull up to it, the person behind has to honk, because I'm sitting there waiting for it to turn green.
The ambulance had to honk at someone because they don't know what to do.
It's probably me.
Yeah, we need to do a PR blast of how to handle a four-way stop like that.
It's just like you're expecting that when it's red, you just stop, and you're just not even paying attention. You're just waiting until out of the corner of your eye it turns green, and you go, and then all of a sudden, you go, "No!" I just did it on the way up just now.
All right. I'm not afraid of that.
I didn't get feedback either way, though, so.
Andy was the one that solved that one, too.
He did, absolutely.
He said that's super.
I wonder if it came on purpose tonight.
Perfect.
Mr. Mayor?
Marty?
Yeah, there was talk at one point of trying to get rid of that light, just because of the cost, just put a four-way stop there. Because it costs a lot of money to run a street light in a year.
I do believe we're under contract with MinDOT for that whole rollback thing for like 25 years on that or something.
Oh, so they still pay for it?
Well, they paid for it initially, but we have to maintain it for 25 years, just like the street lights along corridor and such. So the one on, yeah.
The last time those lights got hit was several years ago. The cost was on the city, and the question became, and there was that, do they have to keep it up? And the other question was, do we want to be the proverbial one-light town? And they said, "No, we like two street lights, though."
No, we don't.
No, you don't.
Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Mark Schreck, Bridget, report tonight. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor. Counselor Vaki, I agree. I like it flashing. It should return much faster. Okay, so tomorrow night, I didn't get in on Facebook until today, because I created the flyer way too long ago. So anyway, pass this around. Tell the fans, raise four plus. Come over to one more Halloween dress-up party at the Chisholm Center. We'll start with the MCA race really fast. I can go quickly, because Travis did a really good overview of it. It was wonderful. It was Herculean is one of the adjectives I've heard described, and Laurie did an amazing job on an article about it. I'll share that with the group of guests there. Lots of good details in there, that there were 2,000-plus racers between 4,000 and 5,000 attendees. Lots of work. We're debriefing, not only with the IRAK group, but with the city group, worked on that to determine how to make it even better in future years. So Carrie Kylin got a little bit more public press on her hiking at Redhead as well, and so it was nice to see that in the WLS Review, really long article with video in the WLS Review for Carrie hiking Redhead. If you haven't been out hiking yet, it's a good way to get to know the trails if it's your first time out there prior to jumping on a bike. And then did want to share that we did extend the campground availability for camping until the 8th. Larry noticed the weather's still good, and there's hunters that might want to book us and camp with us over the next two weeks. So you can spread the word on that as well. Any questions for me?
Counselor, anything for Bridget? Did you, before you, did you mention that you guys went down to Crosby-Irington?
I didn't mention it.
Oh, it wasn't? Okay. Oh, okay. Thank you.
Yeah. We're learning good stuff by Town Chisholm USA.
City Attorney, report tonight.
No formal report, Mayor.
Counselor, anything for the attorney? Clerk Treasure, Eileen, report tonight. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Just a couple of items I wanted to share. Thank you, Mayor, for reminding the community about the upcoming general election on Tuesday, November 8. Also, we have a public accuracy test scheduled for Thursday, November 3, here at City Hall. And we do a test of the ballot machine as well as the Autumn Mark machine. The public is welcome. It was published in the paper, I believe, this week, or it's scheduled for next? Yeah, it should have been yesterday's, or today's paper, right? It's on Wednesday. Also, in regard to your nice mention, Travis, about the City Hall decorations, that's because of Christie and Denny's. They always do a really good job about decorating and celebrating the holidays. So I'll mention that to them. At this week's staff meeting, we talked about putting together a grants committee. So we're going to be collaborating on that. I reached out to Stephanie stating that I'd like to bring everyone together, and, you know, we can get together and start having discussions about grant opportunities for the city. So that's exciting. Doing some truth in taxation presentation preparation, that's always a good deal, yay, which is coming up in December. And that's all I have. Any questions?
Eileen, I have a question. It's a hypothetical question, but it's a real chance it could happen. So we got the upcoming election, and there's two candidates that are write-in candidates that are pretty seriously beating the pavement. If your write-in votes come in higher than a candidate, do we have to, like, we have to count them by hand that night before we ballot, huh?
That's part of the process. We do a verification of the reports that are printed from the machine, as well as a physical count. We don't look at the votes, but we look at the quantity of ballots that are represented on the reports that are, that the machine outputs. So we make sure and check that.
But if you're write-in category one, you'd have to go through them then, right?
I believe so. I would have to check that, though. I don't have that.
Okay, that'd be interesting if that happened.
I wasn't aware of that.
Yeah, you think about if the write-in was the highest vote getter, you'd have to make sure that somebody didn't win in the write-in call. So, thank you.
No, thank you. That's it. Any other questions?
Thank you, Eileen. Seattle Minister, report tonight. Good evening.
Good evening. I do not have a report tonight. Thank you.
Anything for Stephanie, counsel? All right, we'll move on. Consent agenda, that's your list of bills. Communications, which are the August 18, 2022 HRA meeting minutes. which are the August 18, 2022 HRA meeting minutes corrected. Minutes of previous city council meeting, the approved minutes, which are the September 28, 2022 corrected minutes. You can read the rest if you want. October 12, 2022, joint meeting with Chisholm City Council and the school board. October 12, 2022, public assessment hearing, Third Street Northwest Infrastructure Improvement Project. October 12, 2022, regular meeting minutes. October 18, 2022, special meeting minutes, payroll and overtime. Take a motion to accept consent agenda?
Motion.
Thank you. Second.
Smart.
Thank you. Travis and Adam. You're right, Marty. You went to a lot of meetings, hey? You see I'm all listed there. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both? Motion carries. All right, new business. Jess Cassidy, Council resignation.
She turned in her notice of resignation on the 10th, then last day was 11th.
Council looking for a motion to accept a resignation and send her a letter thanking her for her time.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Adam, second.
Support.
Travis, further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both? Motion carries. Thank you, Jess. Jim, resolution number 122-94 municipal consent for culvert and street improvements on A Street North. God, there's people just jumping for joy hearing about that thing.
What I have in my past, line is indicating from the county, the repairs that they're proposing to do along County Road 67, which is already the street north, between First Avenue Northwest and First Avenue Northeast. The second picture shows the north side outside culvert crossing, and what they're proposing to do, as you see in the photograph, is a head wall there that is completely deteriorated, rotting, falling apart. What they're proposing to do is to remove that head wall as well as the fences and so forth, combined it. They'll be extending the two culverts further to the north and putting heifers on those, which is the last plan that I'm showing here. Then along with that, thanks to Larry, they are going to actually remove and replace about 70 feet of sidewalk on that north side, as well as removing about 70 feet of curb and gutter each side of those culverts, as well as milling and overlaying the vituminous pavement, so hopefully we get rid of the speed bumps. So, what they're asking for is our approval municipal consent to perform those culvert sidewalk and street improvements next summer. With that, I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Council, if there's no questions, Jim would be looking for a motion to adopt resolution 1022-94, which will give consent to move forward with that project. Would that be the correct term?
Yes.
I'll make that motion, sir.
Thank you, April 2nd for that.
Support.
Thank you, Cheyenne. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both? Motion carries. Inflow infiltration reduction and sanitary sewer?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. I think I tried to provide a little bit of the information, although I certainly, in my request for council action on this. And as, just a quick summary, a couple of years ago, we did the inflow and infiltration sewer study, which included the smoke testing, and then on the next page, page 20, we have part of the results of that, and what PUC has asked us to do is to start working on alleviating some of the worst efficiencies in our system, which are supplying clean water to our sanitary sewer systems, which is making a lot of money for treatment of clean water when that is on our system. And what we're proposing is moving into about 2025, as you see on 20, which, if you look at the estimated runoff, which is the fourth, the fifth column over, where the major contributors are, we would like to start working with, whether it's a city facility or whether it's privately owned, we'd like to start working towards rectifying those situations. So, what Mandy and I and Larry have put together is a staff letter that you see on pages 21 and 22. Basically, our intent is, as you see in that first paragraph, is to fill in what the nature of the deficiency is, and primarily what we're asking them to do is to contact Mandy so we can set up a meeting of city staff with those people to review, make sure that it actually is a problem, and then work with them to try towards rectifying that situation. In some cases, including some of the city buildings, we know there are roof drains that can't be fixed real quickly. They're going to take, you know, major investments. One of them, of course, is a school, as well as some city buildings as well. They've got a referendum right now, so hopefully we can be working with them and set up, you know, that within their referendum, and they can work towards their architect or whomever to find a solution, work it into the repair set, so we can get it disaccomplished, not necessarily within 30 days. We probably are looking at, in some of these cases, it may take us a couple of years to accomplish it, but at least we're going down that road, hopefully in the right direction. Some of these are as simple as a cap missing off the sand pipe in their front yard, which really only takes probably a 4-inch diameter plastic cap. It's something that you can probably even accomplish using city forces at virtually no cost. So, what we're asking you to do is to review this letter. If you think we're too harsh or too straightforward, or if you have any suggested edits, revisions, additions, additions, we did try to call out, you know, what the nature of this problem is and what it's costing us financially, which is right in the neighborhood, as you see, somewhere we think between $350,000 and $400,000 per year that we're paying for the treatment of clean water that we could certainly be using better ways to actually replace the deficient lines and so forth. So, with that, it's really there for your information. I guess we're looking for your approval to move forward with trying to put this implementation and correction process online. Move forward. With that, I'd be happy to try and answer any questions that you might have, but we certainly appreciate your comments and feedback before we can give us the go-ahead to move forward with trying to work with these problems. One of the other things, working with Larry, we've identified a certain type of plug that Larry is going to be looking at purchase that looks like it might be part of the problem of sub, of plugging holes, open holes on our sanitary sewer manholes. There are plenty of storm sewer manholes, but I think Larry's going to be looking at purchasing those, and then we'll put them in place next spring, so we're not tearing them off with snowfall and have some chance to see how well they operate. As you go through the list, and there's more pages to this list, there's actually another appendix, if I remember correctly, that identifying specifically manholes that are missing plugs that we're going to work towards seeing, getting those sealed off as well.
Jim, being on the, you know, the council rep to the PUC, obviously, you know, I was part of the decision-making to have the smoke testing, and when you find some obvious problems like we have throughout the town, and we know that the taxpayers are paying for every gallon of water that goes over to the waste treatment plant, you know, obviously, I'm all in favor of this letter. Is there a timeframe that we're going to give each of these, or are we going to just kind of wing it a little bit? Because some are going to take longer than others, obviously, and I think you talked a little bit about that, but.
I think maybe, probably what we need to do between Larry and Mandy and I is to make a master list and to, you know, set up the spreadsheet, if you will, as to when they were notified, identifying if their impact is a problem, what are the corrective actions, and then trying to work with them to put together a timeframe, something that we can provide back to you, you know, quarterly update or something of that nature, as to where we're at, what we're doing, what we've accomplished and so forth. I guess would be my hope on this.
So, are you looking tonight to try to get approval on the letter?
Yes, I guess, yes, or get the go-ahead. We'll certainly take any comments, feedback that you have, if we need to make any revisions, additions, corrections, edits that need to be done. Or if it's satisfactory to move ahead, and then we'll be probably between Mandy and I filling in the blanks as to who we're addressing to, the nature of the problems, and then asking them to, again, follow up with Mandy to set up an appointment where we get the city staff, appropriate city staff, to meet with the individuals where necessary to see if, in fact, if we do have a problem, and then to start outlining that path, then give me your financial assistance if we can find that, or in some cases, it may be just as quick and easy for us to do the repairs, instead of just putting the gaps on these cleanouts in the front yard and so forth, at little or no cost to the residents.
Council would be looking for a motion, allow our staff to start sending all letters to the violations, I guess would be the term. Try to start getting, moving towards compliance. I'd look for that motion. I think it's only going to help our, keep our rates down, so.
I'll make the motion to approve this letter.
Support.
Thank you, Marty. Thank you, Cheyenne. Further discussion, Council?
Jim, I just have a question for you. So, there's a, there's quite a few roof drains, right?
Yes.
Can you give me an example of fix? What fixes that?
Most of those are coming down within, inside the walls. I think they did on the warehouse as well, Larry, or some of our, at the senior center, senior center, or the youth center, one of those. So, we're going to have to work to probably bring them down somewhere inside, but then outlet them to the exterior of the building, you know, into the alley or into the, buying into a storm sewer system, something of that nature.
Into the lawn? Or into the yard?
Yeah, into the yards, into the street, onto the driveway or something where it can get through the formal storm sewer system.
Okay, okay.
Marty, questions? Are these gallons per minute, Jim? Is that column, do you know? Is that gallons per minute, or maybe it says in the report?
I felt, do you remember, Larry, was that gallons per day?
Excuse me, Jim. I didn't hear the question.
This estimated runoff, do you know what the numbers are?
It's got, you know, homemade.
5,000, 2,100, 2,000, 50, and all sorts of.
I'm thinking it was gallons per day, but I'll have to check that, and I'll verify that later, Marty.
Another question, and I don't know, maybe Larry knows. Up at the Vaughn-Stefans Street School, there are some pumps run more or less continuously. Do we know where that discharge is going?
Yeah, we checked. It's in, it's in the storm.
It is?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
We confirmed.
Okay, good.
That was a big concern.
Yeah. When I saw the video of that, I was like, ooh, well, that's not going into sanitary sewer. I guess a little, little history. Bear with me. I think when the city was using the wells for the water supply on the north side of town, back in like the 1950s, 60s, 70s, when the mines were operating, the city used wells for the potable water that were all up on the north side of town, and that was the reason they built our treatment plant, because the iron in the water needed to be treated. Well, then, when the mines closed and the pit filled with water, they decided to move the water supply to the Fraser Pit, and they stopped using the wells. And the person that I know with a lot of experience said, "No, there's a high water table up there because the wells used to keep the water table down, but since they stopped using the wells, the water table's up," and kind of correlated with more I and I up there, so. Anyway, just a little background on that stuff.
Yep. You know, when I, back in the day when I served, city engineer Jim Kuslucher actually had proposed to the Department of Natural Resources to put wells, like in the middle of town, right by the prick on the north side, and they do nothing but pump water into the creek that goes in the lake and out the other side, and they didn't buy into the plan. That was his idea, lower the water table. They didn't buy into the plan because they said too much clean water in the lake, so. But he wanted to propose, you know, he proposed that, and they shot it down, so. But that's what he was thinking, lower the water table, and you, so.
Just a quick question. I don't know if it's spelling error, or maybe it's not. On the second paragraph of the main body, it says the city of Chisholm has significant issue of clear water coming into its sanitary sewer. Is it supposed to say clean water?
No.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay, so we have motion and support to allow staff to get these letters out and start working towards solving these problems. Is there further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both? Motion carries. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Larry, St. Louis County, haulage agreement.
Again, Mayor, I'm looking for a support for the haulage agreement, and I've gotten questions. What is it? Well, generally speaking, when Virginia is a landfill, Hibbing used to be a landfill, and we hauled our garbage there, and it got processed and got rid of, well, the Hibbing landfill got full. It's no longer a landfill, it's a transfer station. So, if you bring your garbage to Hibbing, they pick it back up, they put it in the semi, and they haul it to landfill in Virginia. St. Louis County and the city of Chisholm came up in agreement years ago when that happened. Instead of putting the garbage from Chisholm back on the ground, picking it back up, shipping it to Virginia, St. Louis County said, "Just bring it to Virginia, and we'll give you some money for that," and that's a continuation of this plan, so. The one thing we did build in with Eileen's help this year is CPI increase, like we've seen this year because of the fuel. You know, fuel was $1.69 a gallon a couple of years ago. It's $5.29 a gallon today, or what have you. Our costs went up dramatically with no increase to that, and they have agreed to give us an increase year over year, depending on that CPI index there. So, it saves the taxpayer on that side and saves the taxpayer on this side, and it's more efficient, so. Looking for your support and continued support, and this is our last amendment to that original agreement, and so in two years, we'll have a whole new agreement, hopefully, to be brought to you as well.
Council looking for motion to approve that amendment to the contract. It was approved by the Public Utilities Commission as well.
Thank you, Mayor. Forgot about that.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, April 2nd for that.
Smart.
Travis, further discussion?
Did you, is Balkin new?
Oh, I'm sorry. Balkin, till we reached out, I thought like that. St. Louis County reached out and asked us if we would be able to provide some haulage from the Balkin site, that is one of their transfer sites. So, they began transfer to Virginia, and we're right here, and they asked us if we would be willing to work with them. They've been having trouble with, you know, getting staff and equipment like everybody else that you hear of. So, we, we have the availability and the truck time, so we also agreed to do that, is haul some garbage for them, so. I crunched the numbers, and we came up with a plan that we can each make a little bit of efficiency and some money and save the taxpayer, so we're helping them as well, so. And that's just hauling their garbage. It's free garbage. They're paying for it, it's just the haulage, so. And that was $1,000 a month.
Further discussion, Council? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. All right, Eileen's first item. It's informational. She's on her way up for her items. If you have any questions about it, it's basically some adjustments in the budget that net back to zero. Anything on that, Council, before we move on? Or Eileen, do you, anything you want to add on that?
I wanted to point out a correction. I apologize. Under, you have the justification narrative. Under the office equipment and furnishings, the description should have read "to help fund office furniture purchase," whereas purchasing a couple of chairs. And under other equipment, that $9,502 was to help purchase a live scan fingerprint machine. So, I apologize for the error. And it's pretty consistent. This particular budget amendment is consistent with the other departments that I presented, I believe, at the previous.
that are presented, I believe, at the previous, the council meeting previous to this, where we allocated from workers' compensation GL account, in addition to the wages and salaries for Vern's department, which nets to zero. So there really isn't an impact to the budget other than reallocation.
Counsel, questions on that? There you go.
And just move on to the next item, mayor?
Yep. I was just going to say, I appreciate the updates when you do some reallocations, because, you know, when we get to our next budget meeting, we'll know what else, you know, things change around, and you start scratching your head, how come this seems like it changed so much? So just knowing, you know, that the budgets are on your guys' side of the desk. It's a daily discussion about things changing and moving, and it's good to know when they move that the rest of us know, too. All right, so move on to your second and third quarter 2022 report and presentation.
Yeah, so I obviously I really struggled when I submitted this documentation to Susan, so I have some revisions regarding third quarter that I'd like to hand out. There might be. Is there any advice on this?
You have to plug those things in.
So we got to plug it in. These are separate. You're saying staple, Dave?
No.
Take that, I'll see.
He lost it. Oh! All righty, so before you, you see the spreadsheet for the second quarter, and you'll take a look at general fund, permanent improvement fund, as well as enterprise revenue and expenses. And what times are your game times?
This will only take about 90 minutes. You'll be good.
Well, what I'd like, what I'd like to do is take a look at the line items that are exceptional, and I could provide you detail if you'd like. So you let me know if you want detail. I'll just go over briefly each one of those. So as you can see, we're looking at first, general fund revenues, and we're overperforming at 67.74% under licenses and permits. So just interrupt me when you write some detail as to...
Is the first column that told me your budget? Is this for the top of your budget?
That's correct. And under miscellaneous revenues, we're also doing well. We're at 123% above our budget, which is, which is, in addition to other financing sources, we're at 191% approximately. Under general fund expenses, administration department is right, a little over 50% for second quarter. General government buildings is also a little over 50%. Building inspection is at 84.18, and since this is pre, I wanted to do some detail as to that. The reason why this is...